Commissioner, you want to do that now? Yeah, let's do, let's do, uh, I got this. Let's do Recreation Department's opening procedures and schedule.
Jeff.
Yeah. Good job, Commissioner.
Okay, I see.
unmute yourself, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, we can hear you very well, sir.
Yes, uh, there is some questions about the reopening of the Recreation Department. I'm not sure if everyone had the chance to see the board that I sent out the other day. Uh, I have the board. I just ran it out to the board with the main items. And we feel definitely in that, you know, opportunity. And that report might mean opportunities and risks for every item. And this would have a careful evaluation, consideration, and application. So, the first item, um, we have our coronavirus safety protocols. Now we will protect residents, guests, while entering the building. The second item is security options, safety and prevention. The third item is pending wall demolition. And then the fourth item is the robbery drive in the lower lot areas. Item just that cited as everyone who is interested in reopening the Recreation Department. But what I'm not interested in, and if we can prevent this, is opening to closed again. Um, I don't know at this time how the pending wall demolition would impact the Recreation Department. And I'm not sure if we need to call the fire marshal back to give us another count or another evaluation of the Recreation Department to see if the count that they provided us uh, a couple of weeks ago was still standing. Um, these are just questions that I'm asking at this time. Uh, I, I actually, uh, wanted to have these conversations on. Uh, is it okay to do this now?
Yes.
The, what we're, what we're struggling with is how we're going to deliver these effectively on the experience, the service, the retention of people who will venture down here to discover that it's not as comfortable coming down here at this time. That's what I say. So, I'm asking for advisement, direction from the mayor's condition on the items that I sent out. Particularly, um, the security and safety of the resident and guest as they enter and exit from the property. Uh, as well as, uh, something that I do all the time to drive down to the lower lot of robbery. I'm not sure if just opening with, uh, the whole of the problems. Um, there's still some work that still needs to be done as far as I can tell. There may be information that other directors may have that I don't have at this time. And I apologize for not being included. But, uh, if you're traveling down for robbery or to the lower lot, I'm not sure if the contractors are done opening up the basketball and laying the pipes in. But if they're hard to finish, could that be repaid? Um, these are just questions that I'm not looking for answers at this time. I'm just sharing with the mayor commission now, just as with our residents. Um, I will definitely say that at this time, that would be a pleasure with experience driving down for robbery or the lower lot. I'm moving back to item number three, pending wall demolition, which would be right outside of the Recreation Department. I'm not sure how that would be done. And if that will again change the mayor's count to have, I don't know how much of that space compromised. And then, um, with security or safety and prevention. I would be because at this time, I'm only having one way in, one way out. Uh, I'm, I'm, I never worked in a situation where there was only one way in facility. And I'm willing to do whatever as the pleasure of the commission. But I'd like for the opportunity that I may not go over there for the options either. Uh, but I am interested in every one of these options being available to the Recreation Department, the Recreation staff, as well as according to residents and guests out here. Uh, I'm not sure if you guys have this paperwork in front of you at this time. Actually, does everyone have this paperwork in front of you?
Yes, yes.
Okay, um, with item number two, uh, I'm not going to go through everything else, just go through the options. Is that okay? Go through the options at this time. Okay, um, for everyone, an understanding. What we're, will be interesting and due to the layout that residents will have to walk from the lower lot around the building and into the backside of the building into the Recreation Department gymnasium. We would wonder if there would be an opportunity to have armed security when they have the house. Option two, security cameras, door monitoring for the back door. Uh, I had ADT commercial out here earlier today to evaluate that situation. Option three, permission for the Recreation Department to turn on all of the lights outside. Definitely including the outdoor basketball court lights as well as the field. Uh, light, which will, I'm not sure how much that adds to the bottom line for the event field. But we're looking for that, uh, opportunity to be, uh, remember like for that to be on from the time that start until closing. And then all of those hours, uh, for operating the Recreation Department extends as 5:00 p.m. And then option four, um, to solve a lot of this, will only be available for people to book appointments to come to the Recreation Department, whether you are an individual or group. Now, why I'm asking for this? No, it doesn't take for someone to actually live in the city to care about the residents and guests. Especially and particularly when they're in and you're the department that you are managing. So, at this time, uh, I think the Rec Department. I, I, I share this. I believe we can protect you guys better from the coronavirus. And then we could if there was a situation inside the gymnasium that would call for emergency exit. And if that wasn't the case, yes, uh, I don't believe because internally, the Recreation Department is more than ready in regards to serving the residents, yes. But as it relates to safely protecting our patrons, I'm not sure at this time. Maybe some people can see opportunities that I do not, and I do welcome that. But I have to carefully talk to my staff, my commissioner, as well as, uh, walking this, uh, track from the lower lot. I'm actually, I'm actually laying around, I'm actually the basketball court, and I'm acting to the building. I'm not certain at this time. Um. Are there any questions? Because I'm trying to prevent going over every building here. But if that's something that's required at this time, you know, I'll continue to care.
Now, Jeff, do you think we need to table this until you get everything straight? Because you, I mean. Yes or no? Or continue to let people come in?
I'm continuing at this time. Um, again, we're using this care setup. Um. And I didn't know that we only have one way in and one way out.
Thank you. Really quick, uh, thank you for, for that. Um, Commissioner Hart, do you have a question first?
I'll submit it to Mr. Baden.
Okay, Mr. Baden.
Yeah, no. I, I think you put together a very good comprehensive plan here for opening. And, you know, last month when we, you know, asked the question, why aren't we open and operating? You know, I think this addresses probably all those reasons. And, you know, your first item discussing the coronavirus safety protocols, you say all those are in place. So, you know, it shouldn't be a COVID-related issue. Uh, you've had the fire marshal out and he's agreed with the egress and entry in and out of the building the way it currently is, that you have, I think it's 49 people down in the events or down the Recreation Department at any time, based on the current configuration. As far as item three and item four, they're minor issues and I don't know why you're making them an issue because item four, the potholes in the loose gravel, uh, you know, that, that is something the contractor is responsible for cleaning. I've asked him to do it for the last month and a half to clean it up. And they're supposed to do it on a continual basis under their agreement. So I told them today that if it is not cleaned up by Friday, we'll do it ourselves and charge them for it. So potholes, loose gravel are no reason we shouldn't be opening. Uh, Public Works is also responsible for cleaning the lower parking lot from leaves and trash and things like that from normal use, which I'm sure Brian would be more than happy to do. He's done in the past. Uh, the ramp that was put up at the back of the building was put there for the sole purpose of allowing the Rec Department to be open while the construction was going on. Uh, you know, the entire building was to be operational during, the, the existing building is to be operational during the entire construction timeframe. So there's no reason, if there's something hindering you from opening up that's related to construction, the contractor is liable to fix it. So, you know, the pending wall demolition, you know, is there going to be a little inconvenience once they break through that wall? Maybe. Is it going to change whether or not we could have 49 people in the building? No, it's, it's one wall that's being knocked out and it'll be covered back up with protective sheeting or something else in order for that hole to be covered. So item three and four are non-issues. Uh, one, you've taken care of the safety for coronavirus. So to me, we should be able to bring 49 people into the building, uh, you know, right now. And the commission, I think, should consider, uh, the items you list for the security of the building. I mean, we've never had armed security guards for people that entered the back of the building when construction wasn't going on. Now they have to go a little further, so, you know, maybe you want to do that. Uh, option three, turning the lights on and on the field, great idea. You know, light up the entire field, light up that whole back area. That doesn't cost anything, you know, maybe a couple of dollars in electric. It's only going to be for six more months, maybe, until we open the building in July. Uh, so the only two options I see that, you know, you may want to increase the security is hire armed security guards each evening for four hours or whatever you want. If, you know, it's not that much money, a hundred dollars a day or whatever. Uh, and if you want to put a security camp, that's not that expensive either. So why don't we do it and open the building and get moving?
Do I have permission at this time on number one? Um, we have had armed security before. It was done for the YSB, just to park in the parking lot before walking to the trail. And that was recently. So we have had that, maybe we can use that same company that I believe you provided for the YSB department.
Sure.
I'm not sure if you're still available, but maybe we can try to see and take that much at this time. And then two, do we call, I'm just laying out the information. Do we, the fire marshal came out here to give us that number for what he seen at that time? So when the demolition of that wall occurs, should we not call him back to be violently, as a center? Or do we just move forward?
If anything, if anything else knocking out that wall will give another means to get out of the building from the lower level. If you need to, you run out through the plastic and out the front, front parking lot. So, you know, there's no reason, it's not going to block any egress, it's not going to change anything else.
Do you know what's going on with that? I really don't think so. I don't think this is a joking matter. Especially, especially with a lot of the things that's going on in every city.
Okay.
So all I'm saying is the Recreation Department is not trying to delay anything. What we are trying to do is make sure that once we open, we are able to stay open. And then two, when we are open, particularly in the evenings, that the residents feel safe coming here because what that would do to the bottom line, if we have seniors living today that can't track, we'll be paying instructors to teach classes and not be able to make up the money. If that's okay, we're okay.
Okay, really quick.
Information. And then two, um, in the afternoons, all we're trying to do is make sure that that be numbers that I asked you for, which will be 45 or less, depending on what staff and instructors. We have a way of managing the people who are trying to come in. Because what we'll be doing is membership guards. We will be coming out at that work along with trying to manage the patrons inside of the building. And also, is this for just the gymnasium or also including the physical?
Jeff, let me, let me get that in a quick, it is going to go. I think we've, we've seen the information that you provided. We appreciate you providing it very detail and allowed us to make a, a decision about what we're going to do as a commission and whether we want to reopen, uh, the facilities with 49, 45 people and, and below and keeping it capped at that particular, uh, really quick, Commissioner, I'm coming to see Commissioner Blake. Um, so we'll have the opportunity as a commission to really make that decision and see how we want to proceed and move forward. Commissioner, uh, Blake.
Forty-five, forty-five or less.
Forty-five or less, absolutely, forty-five or less.
Let's see how it goes.
Yes, thank you so much.
Let's see how it goes.
Commissioner, what do we think? We're going to move forward with getting it open and reopened? Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, I just have another comment. Um, the reality is with coronavirus, there are, we are raw with unknowns. We can't be frozen. One of the reasons the crime statistics among our youth is going up so much is because they have nothing to do. And if we can give 45 residents something to do, then we should do that. And I think we should, so I think there are a few things that we can do in fail safety. For now, uh, it should be residents only. Uh, there, there should be a sign-in sheet for contact tracing. There should be proof of vaccination. Uh, and all residents should have the new IDs. And we should move forward. And, and then you can do timed entry. So when you do those timed entry, people reserve their space. You set the rules, you say, hey, we're opening up our basketball or whatever program from five to seven. Once it fills up with 45 people, that's it. And, and so, you know, I, I agree with Mr. Baden and with Commissioner Irving. We should go ahead, move forward, open it up and, and let's see. Because the alternate to that is, you know, if we sit out, do you want us to furlough you and your staff? And I don't think that's something that we want to do.
That's not what we're going to, going to do.
No, yeah, I'm not, so we're going to move forward. We're going to move forward, reopening, uh, yeah. Uh, Commissioner, I'm not, Commissioner.
Excuse me?
No, can I call on you, Vice Mayor Miller? I'll get to you.
Oh, okay, I thought you was talking to Commissioner.
He's talking to her.
Excuse me, I was just saying that Commissioner Blake was still talking and you couldn't really hear her. So that's all.
Oh, I didn't know she was talking.
So I, I agree, we need to, to open up with the 45 and with their, with the minimum, the constraints. But we should not have any events, no events at this time. Only providing services for our residents.
Yeah, I don't know if kind of events you could have for 45 people or less, but, uh.
Well, the theater program, I mean, it's really clear.
You said what now?
The theater program or things like that.
Excellent. So, so you said no theater program?
Yes, you said no program.
Okay, no program.
Residents for fifth recreation activity.
I just want everybody to know, no programming, uh, for the commission. So, but we want to open up and move it forward. Commissioner Irving.
Okay, also, I just want to make sure that we were, oh, to make sure that you keep and take these issues in mind with the security guard.
I like it.
Mr. Baden said it would be no issue, so please make sure you get some guards.
So we have light, security guard, and we're ready to go.
That's right. Excellent. So, uh, this is your Commissioner. Commissioner Blake said we're ready to go, Commissioner Green.
Security guard and ready to go.
Light, security guard and ready to go. So it's consensus, I don't think we need a motion for that.
I have one more question.
Uh, Commissioner Irving.
The other question was, do, do you have the cameras? Uh, cameras on the building and?
I'm sorry?
Camera. Do you have camera?
The cameras.
Yeah, they came out to that age already.
Yeah.
About the cameras?
You have camera on the.
I get cameras, I know you're getting the question.
Do we have cameras?
On the inside of the gym.
It's been there.
Yeah.
Yes. They're in the gym.
What about that?
No, they're not.
So you had a representative that come out today?
Yes.
From AD, okay, from ADT?
Yes.
Okay, let's, this is the last conversation on this. Let's, uh, venture to move forward with opening up the gym. Um, and if we can move forward with that early next week, Monday, Tuesday rather, then holiday. All right?
Part of me the hours. Mr. Taylor.
We can discuss that.
No, the only reason I'm asking that is because we need to have the security. I think if there.
You said Tuesday?
I said, will the security be there Tuesday?
See, that's what I'm saying.
Let's, let's all discuss that offline. Let's, let's venture to move forward with getting it open by that time if we can. Great, if we can't, if we need security, Dan's going to work with making sure we get that paid for. Make sure that it's allocated. We're done with discussion. We're done with discussion.
Question, question, my, my question would be, security is very, very important. So, I'm with you on that, Jeff. As far as let's making sure with everything that's happened today out here and people are younger and younger that's killing people, that when they open that door, they should have had at least one security guard, at least one, so they can feel safe as well. I know if I'm down there, I'm going to want somebody down there that I know if something should break out, that can handle the situation outside of the Recreation Staff, but they shouldn't be doing that.
I would say two.
Two, okay, two. So if that's what I'm thinking, we can give.
Yeah, we can give that.
Forty-nine people, I mean, one.
You don't know, you don't know.
No, really, that's.
No, I'm talking about outside.
Well, the non, including the outside.
Okay, I, I got it. Let's end the conversation. We're done.
Are you okay, are you okay, Mr. Taylor, opening without having the security person there? Are you okay with that?
I, I, I'm ready to hook up the services.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's okay?
It's good.
It's okay. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Let's, uh, continue to move on to our next item. Let's take five minutes, grab some break, please.
Before we do that, can you just make a formal motion to hire the security person?
Who wants to take that motion to hire the security for the gym? Whoever can take it.
I can, from the, the motion to hire security for the gym.
It's been moved. Let me ask you the question first. Has it moved? No, it's been moved. It's been put out there, can I get a second?
How many, two?
Two. I didn't know she wanted to begin, but.
I understand.
I said two.
Yeah, for 49 people.
Two, two.
Commissioner Blake said two. Um, it's been moved, um, can I get a second?
Satchel.
Uh, is it moving properly, second or all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I'm sorry.
Motion passed for zero. Yeah, we'll discuss every dance, Mr. Taylor. Thank you so much. All right, take a quick, quick, three to five minute break. We've been at this two and a half hours. Until you can leave, take us off camera. Give us a second, we'll be back in five minutes.
An email request, but.
Antonio, you're ready, ready to go? Thank you very much, we're all back. Thank you, we had to take that final break, but we're back and ready to proceed with the next item on the agenda. And I think, did I miss the city manager job description? That is, Vice Mayor Miller, Commissioner?
So, we had in your packet, um, three job descriptions for city manager. And I know, um, we have College Park, we have Town of Redwood, and we have Latinsburg. So, a lot of information based on what we've had in the past as a position description. So I started pulling together the most pertinent and up-to-date information. So I'm looking for comments from the commission so I can file the draft.
All right, so we're basically at this point looking for comments to bring this one job description together as a whole.
Yes.
All right.
I would like everybody's input and have it ready for the March 3rd meeting to go on to post.
Uh, Commissioner Hart.
Um, Mr. Baden, um, so when we think about our salary, is the salary, the current salary for the city manager competitive?
Uh, I do look at that compared to, the only thing I really compare to is the Hyattville survey.
Yes.
I think I shared that with you at some point.
Yes.
Compared to what you gave me?
The survey?
The Hyattville survey.
Yes, if it was, uh, what we're paying currently is competitive for the city manager position. I told him I don't go off the top of my head and I have to compare it to the Hyattville salary survey, which I think is the most comparable, uh, survey that we have to look at.
Thank you.
All right. So, thank you, Commissioner, Vice Mayor Miller. We will move on to new business. I want to start up a new business with, uh, with Commissioner Miller and Farah. The introduction of ordinance DA's 202202. Uh, this particular ordinance, uh, from my particular vantage point, uh, I saw it last, last night. Is that correct, Commissioner? It was, it was, uh, sent last night?
Yes, yes.
And to be proposed today, um, reasonably this, from reading it and understanding it, this, uh, retracts certain, uh, general orders with the police department. Uh, I'll have one question after I, after you read through it, but I'll have a question about part D. And that question, I guess I could get it over with, but it, it says that once.
Question, is this a personnel matter?
No, it's not a personnel matter, this is a ordinance, it's not a personnel matter.
She'll have it right from you.
Yes, not an individual.
Okay.
Are you, are you looking at it? Are you looking at it?
I think I would.
Are you not looking at it?
I don't know that name, okay.
Oh, okay.
Uh, you're looking at it, bring up the last one.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so anyways, it, it says here in, um...
I mean, it's not that long, you want me to read it?
Yeah, no, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read what I, what I believe, uh, I have a question, but really...
I can read you the comment if you want.
Uh, let me finish, as a chair, let me finish. Okay, um, it, it states here that, uh, you know, Commissioner, you are absolutely right, I'm listening. Commissioner Miller, you can read, this is your ordinance that was, uh, meant to be put forward?
Yes, it's the twenty-twenty-two legislative session, ordinance number D H twenty-twenty-two dash zero two, proposed by Commissioner Miller, Vice Mayor Miller. Um, so the date of in- introduction is February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two ordinance, an ordinance of the mayor and commissioner of the city of District Heights, Maryland, concerning personnel and general orders of the police department for the purpose of amending the City of District Heights Code of Ordinances regarding general orders by the City of District Heights Police Department by repealing and reenacting with amendment section eleven oh four Personnel of the City of District Heights Code of Ordinances twenty-twenty-one addition. Section one, whereas the mayor and commissioner of the City of District Heights, Maryland, have adopted a code of ordinances pursuant to its authority contained in section three oh nine of the City of District Heights chart. And section two, whereas the mayor and commissioners of the City of District Heights, Maryland, believe that it is in the best interest of the city to enact its code of ordinance changes to the personnel section. And section three, be it ordained by the mayor and the commissioners of the City of District Heights, that this ordinance shall be introduced on this fifteenth day of February twenty-twenty-two, as posted on the city's website and in the city's clerk's office for at least six days, but no more than sixty days after its introduction. If adopted, the ordinance shall be effective twenty days after adoption. Notice of its passage shall be posted in a public place within the City of District Heights, Maryland, and published at least once in a publication of general circulation within the city. Section four, be it enacted by the mayor and commission of the City of District Heights, the section eleven oh four of the code of ordinances of the City of District Heights, Maryland, be and the same are hereby repealed and reenacted with the following amendments. D, employee probationary period. All city employees shall be subject to a probationary period of twelve months from the date that they are hired or promoted to a new position. Prior to the expiration of the employee's probationary period, the commission may extend the employee's probationary period for up to an additional twelve months. During the probationary period, the employee serves at the pleasure of the commission. The commission may also terminate an employee's employment in its sole and absolute discretion during the employee's probationary period. Following the satisfactory completion of the probationary period, the employee continuation of service shall be governed by the rules and regulations contained in the District Heights Personnel Manual. Any and all general orders promulgated by the District Heights Police Department prior to the date of this introduction of this ordinance are hereby rescinded and declared void of any need to... No general orders of this District Heights Police Department shall be promulgated unless approved by an ordinance passed by the commission.
Wow, wow, okay, so, with that being said, uh, my, my questions again are, I'm gonna have that. This is what, this is what I see, so, but if this ordinance passed, I'm gonna ask for the motion for this discussion before we begin quickly, that, uh, this is basically a repeal of the general order as of the reading of this provision of this ordinance. So if residents, so if this is written today, for me, it looks as though, uh, the police department here in the City of District Heights can no longer do their job. Uh, it says that it's promulgated, promulgated meaning to make wide the, uh, you know, wide decision, uh, that the commission, um, and for some reason it doesn't have the mayor commission in this, uh, has the mayor commission in the beginning of the ordinance, which I totally, hopefully disagree with, so I'm like, have that strictly possible. Uh, but I totally disagree because I think that any and all general orders promulgated by the city, by District Heights Police Department prior to the date of introduction of this ordinance are hereby rescinded and declared void. No general orders of the District Heights Police Department shall be promulgated unless approved by an ordinance passed by the commission. So that is my view on this, so effectively, Commissioner, so be very mindful, from what I'm reading and from what I understand, that if we read this today and it gets approved, that the City of District Heights residents, we will have no police department because there are no guidelines in which governance, uh, protecting our citizens. I'm listening. It has no, uh, what happens at this particular point, once it's read, uh, despite their opinions, these are my opinions, uh, from, from my position and from what I'm reading, that they will have no safeguards and our police officers have to park their cars, put up their badges, and the city at that point, at this point of being read, will not be able to do the job. Commissioner Miller, Vice Mayor Miller, you introduced this particular, uh, ordinance, please explain that.
I would like to have our city attorney.
No, I would like to have you explain it.
Excuse me, excuse me?
No, I asked you to explain it. No, I asked you to explain, Commissioner, because, because you introduced it. You introduced it, so you should know this particular ordinance, I want to hear from you why you knew.
I want our attorney to state what you just said is incorrect.
No, I was saying for you.
And I want the city attorney to speak on this behalf, on this agenda. So I do have the right to have them speak on behalf of this.
Yeah, I don't wanna hear from him yet.
See?
I don't wanna hear it, he don't have this opportunity to speak.
No, 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 we're doing this together, we're doing this together.
Hold on.
So let him speak.
Yeah, I, 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 I remove the meeting at this point. Commissioner, Vice Mayor Miller, I'm asking you, why did you support this?
And I'm just saying, because the main order is because of the employee probationary period. But, let the attorney speak, we worked on this together, let him speak.
I know that, I don't wanna hear the attorney.
Let him speak, see?
The attorney's not a governing body.
Can I get a motion to see?
You can get a motion to do that.
Who wants the attorney to speak on this?
You cannot get a motion to do that. Port of order, there cannot be a motion made in order to have me silenced. Once again, Commissioner Vice Mayor Miller, I am asking you the question, you put this forth, which is very, it, it's a lot. And I'm asking a particular question that you worked on alongside our city attorney, so you should know exactly what's in it.
And I do know it.
So I'm telling you, tell us, no, no, Commissioner.
The only introducing is, I want him to speak.
He's an attorney, he has an opinion, we're elected by each to do the job of the city. So I'm asking you, Vice Mayor, what does it mean by any and all general orders promulgated by the City of District Heights Police Department prior to the date of introduction of this ordinance are hereby rescinded and declared void? No general orders of the City of District Heights Police Department shall be promulgated unless approved by the ordinance passed by the commission. Commissioner Vice Mayor Miller, I'm asking you the question, you can put your hand down for a second, I, I need you to answer. So the residents can understand why you put forth this bill.
And this is why I'm asking the attorney to jointly discuss this, so you can get your answer.
No, I'm not asking for joint opinions, Vice Mayor, I'm asking for why did you support it? That's all I'm asking.
And actually, that would be a personnel matter that I cannot speak about.
It's not personnel, this is a, this is an ordinance that you...
My answer would be personnel-related that I cannot say out in public.
Oh, okay, so this is a personnel matter? Because I'm trying to get that understanding, so I can forward. No, Commissioner Urban, let me...
We need a positive attorney, nothing we have.
It's a conversation. Let it have a conversation.
I don't know the same conversation.
Ah, it's like an attack, excuse me. You're, you, you constantly bullying me. I just said, we're both on the agenda, let the attorney, let the attorney...
No, no, you can answer the question.
And so, there you go again, and here you go again. It's always...
Once again, you have been acknowledged.
If you're doing the work...
Let me get you, yes, that's the best thing, yes, absolutely.
Come on, man.
Yeah, hold on, let me acknowledge it, let us finish talking, this is why, this is why, I haven't acknowledged you yet.
She's told you, she's through.
This is why, what rules of relegation that you talked about is not gonna be good. Yes, can you please wait till I talk on you? That's procedures, correct?
Will you call on me?
Give me a second, let me finish the conversation. I asked Vice, Vice Mayor for an answer, that is all.
No, she told you.
I'm gonna talk to you, you gonna talk with Vice Mayor. You see, you can't, you can't...
Come on, man.
Wow.
Please, come on, let's get some decorum.
Finish what you gotta say, um...
Let's get some decorum, please.
Yes, please. I'm listening.
Okay, I would like to hear the legal, for both, but, uh, I would like to hear the legal opinion. That's what we have a lawyer for, we pay him for, and I would like to hear the legality of this, to make sure it is indeed legal, because I think some question came up from you about the legality of it. So, if you would let the lawyer speak, I would appreciate it, and then that way that would help me be able to comprehend exactly what this is saying, since I'm the one that's gonna have to vote on it, either pro or against.
So can you read this?
Can we please let the lawyer explain?
I hear what you're saying, are you finished?
That was a question, can we please let the lawyer?
No, I heard you, are, are you finished?
That was a question.
Are you finished?
That was a question, can we please let the lawyer explain?
Yeah, so did you, have you seen this, to be able to read it, or is this your first introduction to it?
Like I said, can we please let the lawyer explain?
Once again, have you read this?
That's my question, you have my question, you have it, you know, we're never gonna sit here and do this. I would like to hear the lawyer explain.
I agree with you, Commissioner Blake, have you read this? No? Commissioner Harper, have you read this?
Yes, you have now.
Obviously, Commissioner Miller has, and she put it forward, Commissioner Urban, have you read this?
Can we let the lawyer explain?
I'm just asking some questions.
What is the purpose of your question?
So I can make sure that we all understand it fully, because we have...
I don't understand it fully, and it doesn't mean I haven't read.
Have you read it?
That's why I'm asking, can the lawyer, can the lawyer, please explain?
Have you read it, Commissioner?
I mean, I can't answer that question, I can't say that.
Attorney Moore, let me give you, give me your opinion, and that's all it is at this point.
He's all, all...
I'm listening.
Good afternoon, good hair, and...
Good afternoon, everybody.
So, so I asked for my question, I asked my...
Oh, the, the problem, any and all general orders promulgated by District Heights Police Department prior to the date of introduction of this ordinance are hereby rescinded and declared void. What does that mean, sir?
So... Uh, so, uh, thank you, because that, the city has general orders, the city's police department has general orders, uh, and the commission has not, and two. And so, the commission, sir, as you know, uh, has responsibility for the oversight and management of the city, including its administration. And so, what this does is, it takes those general orders, which are not yet once seen, go to, via, mission, and it declares those void until such time as they are seen and...
Yeah, so I don't, I don't, I don't get, and it doesn't make sense to me. So you're saying the commission has an opportunity to look at it at some point in time, but in the meantime, what happens? If this gets read on or introduced? So, the, the, can my officers, our officers here in the City of District Heights do their job without general orders?
Uh, they can do their job, and so, without, this is the first introduction, that has been...
It doesn't mean it's... You, the, the thing is, it said, and I'm reading, any and all general orders promulgated by the District Heights Police Department prior to the date of introduction of this ordinance are hereby rescinded and declared void. Did I read something different?
So, what you read is, is the text of this, uh, ordinance, except what you, you're not... The analogy is that the ordinance, again, this is the first introduction of the ordinance, this ordinance hasn't been...
I agree, my dear.
Well, I take that back, I mean, the ordinance that's approved today will be, go into effect twenty days, just like the last ordinance we approved, so if they vote on it today, it goes into effect in twenty days.
Okay.
But, do I have amendments?
So it goes into effect in twenty days, if that's the case, but it said, it said that prior to the date of the introduction of this ordinance, I'm just reading it verbatim, uh, that everything is rescinded, the ordinance hereby rescinds and declares void. I, I just wanna make sure from a legal perspective that what I'm reading and that once my officers go out and make an arrest or something happens, or they get in an accident, or whatever the situation happens, that they are covered by the general orders of the state of Maryland and that our city is protected. What I see here, read, does not convince me of such.
Well, sir, so first, first, and then you need to be, be clear.
Okay.
This doesn't rescind any general orders of the state of Maryland.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Promulgated by the City of District Heights Police Department. And then those aren't rescinded until and after this ordinance comes into effect. So, hopefully between, uh, now and that time, the general orders can be adopted and through my permission.
So what if they're not adopted until then?
I'm sorry.
You know, uh, Dan, you have something to say, uh, Dan, maybe you can say it.
Yeah, if I could maybe spread some light on the situation, I mean, I, I'm a little confused as to why this whole...
We might as well.
I'm a little confused on why this ordinance needs to be introduced to begin with, uh, because the first item related to the probationary period of an employee, our current personnel policy and the new one to be adopted both allow an additional one-year period if you so desire. So, the current policy and the new policy both have that in there, almost verbatim with the way that it's written, so I don't know why we need to do that. And then secondly, the general orders of the police department have been approved by the mayor and commission in the past, and they exist. So, to say that the commission needs to approve them again when they're already in effect, I don't know why we need to do that, and by, you know, I agree with the mayor, the way I read this, there will be no general orders, I don't know any police department in the county, I've worked for two of them, that, you know, the council or the commission that I, that, or the governing body all approve them, and you need it in place in order to have your officers know what they can and cannot do. So, to do away with them does not make any sense, so I, I definitely don't agree with that, and if it's a matter that, you know, they need to be produced, you know, we go back to when they originally adopted in the, in the minutes, however long ago that was, it wasn't that long ago, uh, and we have them. So to say we don't have anything is untrue, because we do, and they were adopted by past commissions.
Yeah.
So for those reasons, I don't know why this is even before the commission. Uh, one, because the first part, as I said, is in the current personnel manual and the new personnel manual. And the second, the general orders have been approved by the commission in the past. So I don't know why we get rid of something that's been approved by past commission.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what it means, with the intent, intent of this particular trying to, uh... Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what these, what the intent in terms of this particular trying to, uh, I don't know what's going on, but it seems like something is going on that I don't know, don't know something about, but to try to get rid of the general orders, I've been here long enough to understand that we have general orders, I understand, I've been here long enough to see that we've passed our particular provisions, uh, and moving things forward. This came out last night, uh, and without very little time to see it, to be adopted, to understand it, to ask these questions beforehand, but Vice Mayor Miller and the city attorney, uh, say they worked on this without the knowledge of the mayor. Uh, this keeps blowing me out, we keep doing things without the knowledge of the mayor knowing anything about it at all, but yet it still shows up and I have to, uh, govern these meetings without the knowledge of what's happening, and because, uh, I've been in this position long enough, I have, I have ability to read, and when it doesn't make sense, I have to ask the question, and this is why I asked the question of Vice Mayor Miller.
This may, but.
No, no, let me, let me finish, I'm speaking.
Because you're just.
Yes, I'm, I'm talking. So the ability.
The attorney wants to say.
Yeah, he can speak after I finish.
What?
Yeah, he can work for us, I don't work for him, let me finish speaking. So my whole point again is, that's why I asked Vice Mayor Miller, why did she, uh, have invoked for this, and her name's all on it, it was proposed and presented by you and introduced by you, and if there's something that is in this that allows us or prohibits our police force, all of them, every last one of them from doing their job, that is problematic, and that's a bigger issue. Um, Mr. Farrar?
Thanks, Mr. Barron much, and let me address, uh, the city treasurer's point, the mayor's point. The officer's a good point, but what this, what this ordinance does is, not only does it adopt what's, what is in the personnel manual, it codifies it in the ordinance, which is the first thing, and extending the probationary period, which, which the vice mayor obviously is important for us to do, so it's not just only in, uh, the personnel manual, but she obviously would be important to have it, codify it in the ordinance. The second issue as relates to the general orders that, that are adopted, this does not, this does not declare those void ad hancio, because those are adopted and approved by the, uh, commission. What this does do is that those, those, uh, general orders which have been promulgated without the approval of the commission, those are the, those are the general orders that are declared void, uh, and, and are rescinded. So any, any general orders that have not been approved and adopted by the, uh, by the commission would be those that are effective. And, you know, and you may, may not be aware, there, there was a personnel matter, I, I, I think, that was the genesis of all of this, um, and, uh, had required this particular, uh, language to be adopted.
So this is a personnel matter?
No, this, this is not a personnel matter, sir, this is an ordinance.
I know, you said, you mentioned this is a personnel matter that, that was an antici.
This is a policy, this is an ordinance that is, that was introduced by Vice Mayor to address the personnel matter.
Okay, um, Chief Wings, your hands up. I'm not holding the seat.
No, 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 no.
Chief Wings.
No, no, no. No, 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 no.
No, this is out of order.
No, he's a part of police officers, police department, and he can get it. This is not a bad order.
This is out of order.
Chief Wings.
This is out of order, out of order.
Chief Wings.
This is out of order.
You have a floor.
Out of order.
Um, if you got records, you feel, uh.
Since this unfortunately, I have spoken to our insurance company, and if introduced today, um, this police department would effectively not be able to operate because of this. Uh, the state of Maryland does not have general orders that we operate under, because the general orders that this protective police department, um, are policies and procedures that force, that, uh, tell police departments and police officers what they can and can't do, can and can't do, and they are, uh, you know, put in place several different ways through means of, of judicial case study, of case law, uh, appeals, there are many different facets, as well as currently the state law, and the use of force. The dangers of, of this with language that this ordinance has in it, um, is it would repeal the general orders of the police department, making it so that, um, that a simple departmental crash could be, uh, extricated by our, our, uh, insurance provider. And that's where I'm at with that.
Thank you so much.
It's a personal matter, I think that's that.
All right, um, time to say that. Vice.
So, if these general orders were adopted, do you know what year they were?
Okay. I know that they were.
So, so as the commission here, do we have the right to see those general orders?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so I sent the email to Acting Chief Wings on the tenth, asking that he share the current general orders with the mayor and the commission.
Sure.
The mayor responds, why are these general orders needed, and why is Vice Mayor requesting them, why wasn't this discussed? Why ASAP? Chief, before providing any documents to the commission, we need to know the rationale, stand until it's provided to the commission and consent is given as a whole.
Absolutely.
So. It's a public document, so you told him not to respond to me.
No, I actually.
That we were going to share at this meeting today with the commission.
Do you have the general orders?
No, I do not have, because you told him not to send it.
Yes. Hold on, excuse me, hold on.
I'm sorry, that order, no.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 hold on, Chief, hold on, Chief. Hold on, Chief, we'll, we'll get you.
As the liaison over the police department, I have been asking Acting Chief Wings for those general orders since I started, since I've been elected, he has not provided a copy for me. So I went to Vice, the Vice Mayor, I've asked him again for all these documentation so that I can do my job as the liaison. These are public documents. One of the problems that are going off throughout our police departments all over the country is secrecy, and you're going to, and so what he does, he stonewalls and gaslights me as the liaison over that department, if anyone should have access to those general orders, it should have been me when, and he should have been offering them to me when I walked in the door. He has never provided a copy for me. And so I don't understand, if we are to govern the police department as a strong commission, we should be versed in how that police department works, and we're not doing our job. I've worked for a city government, I've worked in the chief's staff, there was no way that the mayor and the city council in Detroit, Michigan, did not have access to those general orders. It is, it's unheard of, and that you would have an acting chief that refused to give you that information.
Thank you so much, um, Antonio.
Chief Wings actually left you a copy of the general orders about a month ago.
Okay.
Where? They're not in my box.
They're actually on my desk, we were awaiting you to come in and sign some papers.
So general orders were provided a month ago?
I don't know.
Thank you.
Well, half of my request was not.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, I'm, I don't have anything to do with that, that's not on my level, I'm just letting you know that he did leave them for you.
A month ago.
But you didn't know about it, but you weren't aware of it.
I've been asking him for those since I came on board.
Um, I have to call you to the, to the, to the carpet, uh, Chief, uh, did you, did you not buy him the general orders?
I didn't have the documents, I didn't have the documentation, uh, stating that such that, uh, you have documents, all things of that nature, and I informed the entire commission in an email, and in several city meetings, that we were working on updating our general orders because they were, uh, she's twenty, almost twenty-five years old, and then outdated with, uh, great case law and things of that nature. And what I did provide to District Park Board in electronic and written documents, were both the drafted, uh, um, uh, civil whole, uh, uh, general orders, which is what, uh, you know, one of the things that we were looking at, uh, moving to, and, and, uh, we're putting these orders, it's a more than a thousand-page document, uh, it covers Maryland case law, it covers, uh, uh, national case law, and, uh, it, it, you know, general orders protect, uh, not only the officers, but also the, uh, the, the city itself, and from liability, and if there's ever, you know, case law, anything from use of force to, uh, machines of policies and things of that nature, and if this is, uh, uh, rescinded, uh, we're going to court, and, and areas of our, our general orders, um, you won't be able to use it. Uh, the other thing with that is, um, uh, uh, Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Hartman, this is absolutely very, this is a public document, however, there are, uh, just, uh, security operational issues with placing them all online, uh, uh, which is actually in our law, under House Bill, it leads to sixteen, to, uh, uh, disloyal of our general orders to the public.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, pardon, I'm sorry. Acting Chief Wings, I've never told you that was my intention to put them online, so you're making an inference that is untrue, which you do often, which you do often.
That's the law.
You do, exactly, I did not tell you that I wanted to place those, you know, you twist things, and that's unfortunate, that is unfortunate.
So, so let's continue, let me, let me, let me handle this meeting.
He should be speaking, he shouldn't be speaking.
He should be speaking, thank you so much, Chief Wings, once again, your input is very important on this, this matter. It is before the commission, so, uh, I just wanted to clarify for the public, uh, whether you agree or disagree, I need to know from this position what we need to do. So by chance, this is read, and by chance, we are unprotected because of your rash decisions. This is what it is. So commission, I ask you, you put it forward?
I'm by the mayor, I'm by the mayor.
I said, commission, we're all commission.
So, so I would like to table this because you have turned it into something that's not even worth arguing about.
So you want to table it, Vice Mayor?
Till the next meeting.
Vice Mayor says she wants to table it until the next meeting, so we can get more clarity on how this will look.
In your interpretation.
This hopefully subverted a catastrophe, uh, in our city government. So, thank you so much, this patient.
Is it possible we can get a parliamentarian up at this meeting? We used to have Chief Gibson, and he would keep things in check, but we definitely need a parliamentarian, because this is ridiculous.
I totally agree with you.
So, uh, if we could find, Dan, you know how we could get a parliamentarian, uh, baby?
I've never had to get one before.
I know, neither. Because we've had this problem.
We have a certain.
I'll get a parliamentarian if I want to.
They kind of, uh, we had, she doesn't know how to feel. Chief Gibson used to be the.
So, yeah, we're going to talk, we'll discuss this.
So you see what I'm looking at, no, wait a minute, what was the question, I was going to look, that was the question, is it possible we can get a parliamentarian?
Yes, it's possible, we'll look at it, we'll talk among the commission and see what we can do. It's not, it's not.
Can you have a personnel matter? We still got three, I believe.
Yes, um, so you said you wanted to go into.
No, we, we got to do this.
Okay, closed session? Okay.
We got to finish.
Yeah, no, we need to finish our business, and we can conduct ourselves. Uh, so the Commissioner Urban, you're, you're speaking, uh.
I'm not speaking.
Ben Parkside, you want to speak on about that?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Well, you have a red light traffic study guy on there, why are we, you kept waiting?
Is he here?
Is he on?
Anyway, Vice Mayor, please, add some support, please. Commissioner? Ben Parkside, I have, I understand that.
Is he still here, because he's a guest right there. Can he go ahead so he can get off?
You have a lot to speak about?
Yeah, can we do him, and then we come back to me, so he can go ahead and do what he's supposed to do, he's a guest. Please.
Yes, sir.
Uh, uh, sir, I'm late, um, I'm going to just wait, I'm going to have a long day. My name is Mike Phelan, I'm the commercial director for Ultimate Incorporated, where I red light speed camera vendor here in Frenchwood, Missouri, uh, boom, Opto Traffic is our name, prior to those JD names, and now Frenchwood is going for a while now, um, since it's a lot of time. I do have a, a slide to share, I got the light, um, or I can have to still open up discussion, so we can talk, I don't want to take up, you know, too much time, uh, with you guys this afternoon, uh, so however you guys prefer, you know, I can make it quick, I have to show a quick little few slides about our company, and kind of what I'm here to talk about.
Yeah, there's a few slides, one.
Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, I'd like to mention for, um, we're a speed camera running vendor here in Frenchwood, Missouri, um, starting back in two thousand five. Our authority key, which means there are no cross jurisdiction jurisdictions, I'm not understanding that the city District Heights currently has, um, some speed camera programs already in place, um, and I was trying to explain, and they just talked about about what Arcof is going to offer, uh, to the city, um, as well as, um, the potential some red light, um, locations as well. Uh, I know one thing we don't want to kind of get on, our community of road is just offering up some type of traffic studies that are lost to the city, uh, just from our standpoint, it will allow us to come in and, um, maybe give a third-party perspective on how the traffic flow goes from the speed and our red light side or currently handling around, um, within the city. So, um, I can make a point for, for our, our Frenchwood, uh, Frenchwood is having a base of money, our office is right there, right now. Um, we have the, uh, current program for the Frenchwood, uh, both CD and red light, um, and, um, today, good issue, just roughly over five million applications, will give me, uh, all of our jurisdictions. Uh, we have some new, um, information and technology coming out soon, uh, both some, uh, healthcare services and some security area, security assistance. One more key, I think I like, I'm not sure if, uh, the commission can manage yourself, and then I'm aware of the changing law within, on what is being purchased in, uh, the, like, last year, uh, sorry, last year, uh, state legislation changed, uh, the current red light, current, current speed camera bill, uh, that's not residential, but within Frenchwood, so this expands within Frenchwood regarding the use of speed camera, uh, this laws, like I said, for the last fifteen years, so, um, this is now a great second government of those, uh, where it currently uses, uh, automated enforcement. I think my resident area is, I just, in that way, they can rest in the state of those areas, not just where, so maybe the rest. Uh, is it some of the key requirements of this, that this just has to not hard to get into the business district? I have other residents, you know, within, um, on my career key, uh, so, so really, um, you know, also now it's increasing to twenty-four seventy-four enforcement versus, uh, the new enforcement was within the school of six eighty, yeah, uh, six eighty, yeah, my kids are going now. Um, and I can mention, um, we offer, we do some, uh, all speedable speed studies, um, both for speed and red light, uh, when it comes to these kind of programs. Um, is this a quick overview of what the system we are, uh, I know that you have a long day, I have to just turn it off, so I'm going to talk about some of our systems, so both yellow health, and, um, all of them, uh, have assistance, so both, uh, have affordability, uh, also, and if they're already old, you know, in a better place, uh, our systems are both two-lane or multi-lane same direction, uh, to allow, um, for all probability lines. Uh, we'll, we'll, that one's for customer service, maybe maintenance centers, uh, our, um, the system are being corrected, uh, so there's a possibility, or, or that's not a possibility, for people to get access to our database, uh, because all the base levels have, have, have a chance to, uh, they take care of everyone. Uh, and they all have some of the payment collection, all their sort of, and, um, our program training, um, from, from state, from whatever, and, um, the, uh, all of them, for sort of, and everything else. So, uh, and you're, I know kind of, that's a quick, uh, one, one, one quick thing, I just want to kind of, I think it's a, well, all of the, the speed study, um, since it's just, you know, overview of your, you know, your programs, and maybe will be, can increase some possibilities for, for enforcement, and you can overlook now how, 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 uh, our, 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 for the city.
Thank you so much. Any questions at all from? Any questions at all from the Commission?
Yes, I have a question. This is Vice Mayor Cynthia Miller. When could you be able to put together a study, a free traffic study? Would it be based on what our requirements or what we think would be best to, uh, certain locations?
Right, right. And then getting those locations, so whether it's, uh, you know, working with Acting Chief Wings or someone else, we can then restart our, you know, location. Which is, I will order, which is looking like my, 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 my area, I have a little chat on you. And then looking at those locations, I mean, I can, you know, as soon as next week, um, I can be down there and start the speed process and then the separation. And I can then petition, uh, once the, uh, we have a location set, we can go forward. We can have the speed study.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you very much. You have a question for the Commission?
I got a question.
Uh, Dan?
Uh, what happened to Opto Traffic and why the change to Altman? And also you say that the fees will be covered by the tickets themselves. So do you not charge a fixed amount per camera? Uh, because I did not think you were allowed to assess a fee based on number of tickets collected.
Yeah, so to address the first question, um, Opto Traffic was, uh, a security of ultimate uh, holder of, 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 back in 2005. Um, I had, or starting another feature, uh, you know, only, uh, but during that time, it's decided to, and we're working right together. Uh, Opto Traffic, that was decently this, and that's a security, security of can be recorded, all can be recorded, which is how our, our company, um, to give overall certified, they only made state, we made one A I, uh, A R for, she, uh, uh, sure. Um, and then to address the second question, so, no, uh, I had a fix, I had a free for, uh, um, this, you know, does it not have to be a, uh, per eighty percent or per eighty on that? Um, we do it, we do the, uh, our attorney, multiple attorneys, we do that. We have our comparable programs. So you know, there is go, um, send, send B D for every each member per month. I'm just living my life either. Uh, based, uh, on my, my, uh, detail, also nine percent, based over, uh, to, to the air. So in case it would be like, uh, uh, how, how, how our contracts have been.
Yeah, I'd be interested in that.
Excellent. Excellent, excellent, excellent. Thank you so much for, for that report. Uh, it was awesome, good stuff. Uh, allows us to make an informed decision on what we're going to do moving forward. So we appreciate that. And, uh, as Dan said, we'll be in contact with you and your company, okay? You're awesome. Thank you now. So with, with that said, any more, any further questions?
No.
All right. With that said, I'm going to pass the gallows to Commissioner Vice Mayor Miller. I have a doctor's appointment, so I have to go. Sure they could, uh, continue the meeting, uh, just as well. So gallows, pass you. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, residents.
She needs to go to the chair.
So we only have two more items left.
So we want to do the, uh, the residents park. Nice, because you got them.
Yeah.
Yeah, basically, uh, most, everything in the park, other than the landscape thing and all of that, that's going to be maintained. But we've already talked about that. The signage is the last thing that we really need to get. So I spoke with Mr. Bailey and, uh, to get some folks. We had really primarily one last time. Went out to three people, but only one really didn't get it. So, uh, I asked him, would you put it back out again? So we can see if we can get some more. The one person really had a good proposal, but we want to make sure that we do everything per regulation, with the data that's on there.
Yep, um, yeah, we had talked about it and I guess it's just for the Commission, the tension that something we're going to be looking into and some that was actually funded in the current budget. So what I need is the, I've never seen the proposal that you got before. Because we, you know, if you like that style of sign, then we would need to write up a generic specification in order to put that out for people to bid on, uh, which would be the next step. So if you want to share that with me, you know, I could put together an R S P to send out the proposal for.
Is it possible to have other people come in? Because they might have some ideas of their own that I might like even better or that the committee might like even better than the one we have now. So they might come in with fresh ideas and give us a whole new different take on what should be out there.
Yeah, that would be a whole different solicitation if that's the way you want to do it. You know, either if you have a good idea, then you put that idea out, you have people bid on that idea. If you're not sure that's what you want, then you would have put out an R S P for companies to, uh, provide design services. So that would be, you know, a whole different animal. Where someone would come in and work with us like we did on the, uh, on Veterans Park in the beginning, you know, what kind of chairs do you want? What do you want it to look like? What kind of plants do you want? What type of amenities do you want? So on a sign, you would put out, you'd hire a, a company or put out an R S P for a company that would help design a product. And then you would, secondly, after you agree that product, you would put it out to bid. So you almost, it sounds like you're looking for someone to engineer the sign, draw plans and specs and then put it out for someone else to build.
Well, the one company that did come, his company actually gave us specs and all, but his company does all of it. You don't have other companies out here that can do the same thing? But we don't have to go and get a design from an architect or something and then have another company come in? I mean, as small as the park is, seems to me there would be companies out here that could bring a concept of what their company can do with signage. And what, based on the space that's out there and the direction of traffic and everything, like that's one company did, that they can come through the same thing that that company did. And it was just that company, it wasn't a, you know, a separate architect. And then the company, so I would like to think there's some more companies out there that can do the same thing this particular company did.
Yeah, I mean, there's, yeah.
Let's try that.
There's different ways to do it. You know, I mean, if that, if you're going to ask two more companies to come out and work with you and committee or whoever and, you know, come up with a design, then you have three different companies with three different designs. And then you still got to put it out to bid or you wait for bid requirements so that you have someone, just like you did with, uh, codification services. Between five and fifteen thousand, you need three bids. This is going to be more than fifteen, so you need a formal R S P to go out. So how do you, and this, I know this is an issue that we've talked about. You've had one company came out and you like it, but you don't want to share their product with other companies because they took the time to come out.
Well, not only that, that was their idea. I'd like to see two more new fresh ideas. Because that's what they did, that another company might come out and have a whole, total different concept of what should go there, so.
So, Lady, I'll have to have this done.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
All right, so we had one more item. Test kits, so.
Oh, the COVID test kits. Oh, the test kits.
Is that you, Antonio?
Yes, actually, we have two other items. Um, you, I don't know if you want to table the second, but let's go through the, uh, test kits. Um, Mayor, Commission, um, the city here received, uh, 223, uh, COVID test kits. And we also received a case of 10 per box of N95 face masks to distribute to the residents. What we would, uh, want to decide on, uh, is how to, uh, distribute them. Um, we would probably want to suggest that the rec department do that. Um, and also we will want to decide, um, and probably using the county's guideline on how they have been distributing their, uh, items. Where, when, you know, we need to just establish, uh, times and dates so that we can put that out to the public so that, uh, the residents of the incorporated city are able to get those, uh, masks and test kits. Um, and, you know, decide if we want to make sure that people have identification, things of that nature. So that will be something for the Commission to decide exactly how we want to distribute these items that we got from the state.
Can we distribute them the same way that we distributed the gift cards?
Well.
Oh, can we distribute them the same way we distributed the gift cards and maybe do like the, the county is doing two per, per household or two per?
We would actually want to do one, um, because we have over.
Six thousand.
Six thousand, so twenty, 223 kits, we wouldn't want to give two kits per person.
Okay.
Um, but not quite sure if we want to do it how we did the gift cards. Um, but we can just use as a baseline the instructions that Prince George County were giving to all the different, uh, churches and libraries and recreation centers. Um, that shouldn't be hard at all to, uh, you know, find out that information. Um, you all just need to, again, I would suggest, uh, assigning that task to recreation. Um, they are, uh, experienced in, um, doing this type of thing. So, uh, you know, a larger scale than what I've done. Um, so I would reach out to, uh, Mr. Taylor. Um, and once, uh, that's established, I can post that on the website, Constant Contact. Um, and also any other, uh, media that we have and we'll go from there. But, you know, just to let, uh, Vice Mayor Miller announce to the residents that we do have those items and we will be calling upon the, uh, residents to come out and get those, uh, items, uh, coming soon on a notification.
Also, the, um, you didn't specifically say where you receive them. That was from the county.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Prince George County. So I would also think about servicing the seniors and the veterans first also. Because, you know, some of them can't get out. You know, to make sure that we provide a service.
Yeah, you can, um, you can definitely set the guidelines, the Commission, and then, um, let Mr. Taylor know exactly how you all and the base that you want to serve first. You know, just like we did with the gift cards, you know? Um, you know, you can set parameters and, you know, we can decide to have seniors first, you know, uh, disabled, veterans, then resident, you know, we can, we can set that up.
It's a whole lot, I mean, why, I mean, why do you, if that's what you want to do, why don't you just say that the, to city residents who are seniors over sixty, sixty-five, sixty? Sixty and veterans. First come, first served.
Right.
Perfect, though.
Yes.
Three glasses and one test kit.
Make a list.
Yeah.
Yeah. Work on that. Moving, you said you had another.
Oh, um, are you all going to, uh, uh, talk about the resolution, um, that was added to the agenda?
Is this, um, I think we should, is this something that I can read into? Yeah, this needs to go into, we need to go into closed session. Because there's a person. Oh, we need to go into closed session because there's a personnel ad.
Okay.
But you can, it's a resolution, which is, uh.
Oh, okay. I'll, I'll read the resolution and then we can go on.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll read it into the record. Okay, and then we still have to go into closed session. Um, so I introduce this resolution. Um, it is C R two dash 2022. Um, the date of introduction is February 15th, 2022. And it is a resolution concerning the resignation of Officer Trayvon Campbell. For the purpose of clarifying the resignation of Officer Trayvon Campbell from the City of District Tights Police Department, whereas the City of District Tights was incorporated in 1936, and whereas the current city charter was adopted and amended by Charter Amendment Resolution 96 dash 05, effective September 20th, 1996, and whereas pursuant to Section 402, in parentheses, 46 of the charter. The city acting by and through its commission may establish, operate, and maintain a police force for the purposes of enforcing all laws of the city and state equally within the city limits and enforcing all laws. And whereas Officer Trayvon Campbell was employed by the City of District Tights Police Department beginning March 8th, 2021. Whereas Officer Trayvon Campbell tendered his resignation from the City of District Tights Police Department to the Acting Chief of Police on December 7th, 2021. And whereas the commission accepted Officer Campbell's voluntary resignation, resignation effective December 7th, 2021. And whereas on the effective date of Officer Campbell's resignation, Officer Campbell was in good standing with the City of District Tights Police Department. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and commissioners of the City of District Tights, Maryland, that it be known that Officer Trayvon Campbell voluntarily resigned in good standing from the City of District Tights, Maryland Police Department on December 7th, 2021. And be it further resolved that any and all records maintained by the City of District Tights, Maryland regarding Officer Trayvon Campbell shall reflect that Officer Trayvon Campbell voluntarily resigned in good standing from the City of District Tights Police Department. And be it further resolved that Officer Trayvon Campbell shall be considered for rehire by the City of District Tights, Maryland Police Department in the future. And be it further resolved that upon adoption of this resolution, the city clerk shall transmit an official sealed copy of this resolution to the Maryland Police and Correctional Training Commissioner and to Officer Trayvon Campbell. And be it further resolved that this res- resolution shall take effect upon its adoption adopted this 15th day of February, 2022.
Thank you. Were there any other discussions from, uh, Mr. Farah? Did he have any comments?
Oh, um, I'm sorry. Commissioner Hartwell said adopted, it wouldn't be adopted today. It's just introduced today. At the end of.
Thank you, I'll make that correction that it's introduced today.
Mr. Farah, did you have a comment on that?
So, so let me, let me, um, say. Did you, did you hear me?
No.
Can you hear me now?
All right, I'm trying to get in Mr. Robbins and then we.
He's trying to get in.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Yeah.
I'll be back.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, okay, okay. Now, there's feedback right here. But, but really briefly, again, I was, uh, this morning, I asked both for jury this morning, uh, with T J and attorneys with T J, it's also a, uh, issue as it relates to the police department. Uh, but again, Officer, I apologize, Commissioner Hartwell, plus this, this resolution, I'm not, if, uh, the commissioners are aware of the personnel issue that this addresses. Um, and I think this is probably the appropriate course of action of where the commission takes as it relates to that personnel issue, uh, and getting addresses, uh, police on all issues, uh, that the commission is, is, is attempting to address. So, so at that, I, I, are there any particular questions that the commission answered me? Uh, as it relates to, to that, I may want to take those in, uh, closed session. Uh, I, I, answering question, might, might answer, uh, you know, session if there are any questions.
Well, well, there will be some questions, but in a closed session.
So can we go to?
So can I get a, a motion to go in a closed session?
Uh, Commissioner Hartwell moved that we go into the closed session.
Give me a second. All in favor?
Uh.
Uh, so, uh, Antonio, we're going to go.
Who's rolling?
We are returning back from our closed session. It is 5:25 P M. We're returning from a closed session of a personnel matter. And we just have one more item that we need to close out is the resolution number CRT, CR2-2022, proposed and presented by Commissioner Harcourt. So, so we are at this point where it was read and adopted as of this 15th day of February 2022. So could I get a motion to?
What, on order?
Yes. It's not adopted until you actually do the motion and it's voted on.
So I will, correction, I will do the motion to vote on this. So could I get a motion?
Okay, I will make a motion that we accept, resolution number CRT2-2022.
Could I get a second? She takes a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it.
Can you vote it?
Yes, aye.
So we have come to the end of our very long meeting this evening. We got a lot done. And so could I get a motion to adjourn the meeting? Could I get a second? Okay, meeting is adjourned.
I, aye.
Aye. Are we all in favor? Aye, aye. Good meeting, good meeting, very productive, very informational. I just feel great about us just moving forward.
Keep doing it, Joe.
Doesn't have that people.
Okay, we can't keep doing it.
And that's.
I have way over here.
Banana, man.
Who's rolling?
We are returning back from our closed session. It is 5:25 PM. We're returning from a closed session of a personnel matter. And we just have one more item that we need to close out is the resolution number CRT, CR2-2022, proposed and presented by Commissioner Harcourt. So, so we are at this point where it was read and adopted as of this 15th day of February 2022. So could I get a motion to?
What, on order?
Yes. It's not, it's not adopted until you actually do the motion and it's voted on.
So I will, correction, I will do the motion to vote on this. So could I get a motion?
Okay, I will make a motion that we accept, resolution number CRT2-2022.
Could I get a second? She takes a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it.
Can you vote it?
Yes, aye.
So we have come to the end of our very long meeting this evening. We got a lot done. And so could I get a motion to adjourn the meeting? Could I get a second? Okay, meeting is adjourned.
I, aye.
Aye. Are we all in favor? Aye, aye. Good meeting, good meeting, very productive, very informational. I just feel great about us just moving forward.
Keep doing it, Joe.
Doesn't have that people.
Okay, we can't keep doing it.
And that's.
I have way over here.
Banana, man.